Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the July 23 Citrus Heights City Council Meeting. So we will start off with the flag salute. If you're somewhere, you can stand. Please join me within the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Thank you all. Ms. Van, if you would do roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins. Councilmember Daniels. Councilmember Middleton. Council Vice Mayor Miller. And Mayor Slowey.
Here. Thank you. Video statement, Amy.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and 18 TU vers cable systems. This meeting is closed captioned and webcast at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replay is on Monday, July 27 at 9:00 AM on Channel 14.
Thank you, Amy. Next item approval of the agenda. Nobody has any objections? Just consent to...
Second.
Yeah, I don't really want to take a vote on it. Unless you're going to object, we're just going to move forward. Comments by councilmembers and regional board updates. Portia, let's start with you.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Jeannie.
Hi. First of all, I want to apologize. At last meeting, I couldn't find my notes and I flung it around. It was unfair. So we report tonight what I wanted to talk about was the Sanitation District's new program called Harvest Water. And this is a recycle program for borrowers and landlords in the Southern Sacramento County. We're in the process of annexing portions of the county just for the purpose of providing recycled water to agricultural and ecosystem ground. And not to actually add sewer capacity to it. We're excited to be able to use our resources here in our region instead of having them all flow down together. Also, we had a meeting yesterday and we announced the retirement of Vic Taitana, who's been the lead engineer on our Aqua Water project over the last many months. As our plant rebuilt, it's a $1.7 billion project, the biggest project in the county to date. And that's moving along very well. We're actually on the tail end of it. Most of the elements of it have been constructed. And we're going to pull the street around it in a couple of years and the project will be done. That's all. All ahead.
Great. Thanks, Jeannie. Brett.
None.
Okay. Vice Mayor Miller.
Did there's any meetings over the past couple of weeks? I do have RT coming up on Monday, but I just read the agenda and there's nothing exciting or too controversial on there. So that's my report.
Okay. And I've got nothing as well. So that was short, sweet, and to the point. All right. So we're going to do public comment on items that are not on the agenda. And for this public comment, Amy, do we have any normal? Non-number-seven public comment?
If there's any members of the public that wish to speak under general public comment, they would use the raise the hand feature in Zoom. I don't see any hands currently raised. Actually, I do see one now, but if it's for general public comment, we will take public comment for other items as those items are heard. And I also do have one written comment received for general public comment.
So in the Zoom, if you don't know how to raise your hand, hit the upper right-hand corner of your screen. You'll see there's something that says participants. If you click on that there, you will see a list of things. And one of them is raise your hand. We have to unmute you and you'll get a pop-up if we unmute you that you have to accept. So Amy, if you would like to check on the one hand raise and then after that, we'll take the written one.
They actually...
They went away?
Oh, they're back again. So first, we'll hear from Brandon Heron. I have now allowed you to speak for three minutes.
Hello, I'm Brandon Heron. I just wanted to talk a little bit about me being from our police department. And so pretty much the reason why I'm talking is I just wanted to let you guys know about how the...I was an explorer prior to becoming an officer. I'm currently an officer. And I wanted to speak pretty much about my experience and how I believe the Explorer Program has helped me over the years to come. I joined the Explorer Program with our department in 2012. I was in there for about two and a half years and pretty much our department helped. It helped me become a bigger leader. It helped me become who I am today. And I just wanted to share my experience. So over those years, I met several great people. And just throughout our program, it helped me become a bigger leader by just some of the things that we built, team building. It taught me how to pretty much move forward and it kind of directed my path as far as law enforcement and showed me and confirmed that it's law enforcement, something I really want to do. And while by being in that program, it allowed me to talk to other people, help other people. And through that, it made me become an Explorer Advisor. So I'm currently an Explorer Advisor where I love to mentor and help teenagers and show them pretty much what it is law enforcement does. It's like a partnership, helping them stay on the right path. And so pretty much it helps me, like I enjoy being able to talk to them, mentor them, go to like some of their games and help them keep on the right path. And it makes them a bigger leader. It helps me improve and I enjoy seeing some of the things that they accomplish and especially knowing that they can be on the right path and help, I can help them stay on the right path so they can get a bigger career. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. You know, thank you for being in the program. Thanks for coming forward and talking about it. I mean, your experience is exactly what the Explorers are about. Naturally, we don't expect everybody who goes through that to, you know, make a decision to go into law enforcement. But at the end of the day, chances are, they're going to be a pretty productive member of society and interact the good way with police versus the other way in the back of the car. So again, thanks for your comments and thanks for your service in law enforcement today. I don't see other, any other hands, Amy, so I will let you read the one that we got in via email.
So we received a written public comment from David Warren. He states, "The most significant danger to our community is not fiscal insolvency, drunk drivers, or gang violence, as confirmed by the fact that nine Citrus Heights residents have died from COVID-19, more than as a result of drunk drivers or gun violence this year. It is because no one can see infected asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic individuals who refuse common sense protective measures to prevent the spread of COVID-19, such as individuals who attend church services in defiance of the Governor's Executive Order. The CHPD has published that it will not proactively enforce the Governor's Executive Order requiring all individuals wear face coverings in public and not congregate for such activities as church services. As a conscience, as a consequence, individuals and groups have flaunted their refusal to wear face coverings. Worse yet, the city council, unlike other major municipalities across the country, have refused to place a mandatory face covering ordinance for consideration on the city's agenda. I spoke with a business owner who called the CHPD for help ejecting an individual who demanded entry but refused to wear a mask. The CHPD responded two hours later, making the call for assistance useless. In that both the city hall and the CHPD have closed access to their offices to the public, you have recognized the threat caused by individuals who are vectors. Now that President has joined, public health officials advocating the use of masks, I ask the city council answer one question: Why hasn't this city adopted enforcement of Governor Newsom's executive order?"
Thank you, Amy. So moving on to the regular calendar. Item number four.
Next item, regular calendar four. The subject is Initiate Proceedings for Fiscal Year 2020-21 Annual Update Landscape Maintenance Assessment Districts 9801, 9802, and 0301. And the recommendation is to adopt resolutions to initiate proceedings and adopt resolutions for the intention to levy and collect assessments for the Landscape Maintenance Assessment Districts.
Great. Thank you. So Stu, are you doing this one or...?
I'll be doing this.
Oh, okay. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers.
I mean, I think we do this every year, so every one of you should have seen this many times. There are six separate resolutions and we will have to take six separate roll call votes. So first of all, is there any public comment on this? I don't see any. So that's good. Well, what's the pleasure of the council?
I'll make the motion to, the first motion to initiate proceedings pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972 for Maintenance District 9801.
Okay.
So Miller motion, Middleton second. Amy roll call.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
I'd further make another motion that we initiate proceedings pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act for Maintenance Assessment District 9802, Zones 1, 2, and 3.
Second.
And I'm sorry, was that Jeannie or was that Portia? I wasn't paying attention. Who's second? Okay. So Miller and motion, Bruins second. Roll call, Amy.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye. Sorry. All right.
And motion number three. Initiate proceedings pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972 for Assessment District 0301, Zones 1 and 2.
Was that a...
Okay, Jeannie.
I wasn't sure. Thank you. All right. Miller motion, Bruins second. Amy.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye.
Motion number four, that we move that we levy and collect assessments for fiscal year 2021 for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District 98-01.
Second.
Miller and Bruins.
Actually, it was Middleton.
Middleton. Well, that happens when I'm not looking. Those two, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Two more to go.
Oh, number five. Move that we levy and collect assessments for this coming fiscal year for District 98-02, Zones 1, 2, and 3.
Okay.
All right. Now, that was Bruins second and that was Miller motion. Roll call, Amy.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye.
And last and not least, that move that we levy and collect assessments for fiscal year 2021 for Assessment District 0301, Zones 1 and 2.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion, Miller second, Bruins roll call.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye.
All right. All those motions pass. We'll see them again next month. Item five, next item.
Item five, the subject is Initiate Proceedings for Fiscal Year 2020-21 Annual Update for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District 9701. And the recommendation is to adopt a resolution to initiate proceedings and a resolution for the intention to levy and collect assessments for the Landscape Maintenance Assessment District.
All right. Ardeline, is it you up again?
That is me and the exact same item, but for a different assessment district, 9701.
Okay. Everything else stays the same, just the number of the district. All right. What's the pleasure of the council? There's two items here that need adopting.
Well, I'm on a roll, so I'll move that we initiate proceedings pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District 97-01, Zones 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Okay.
All right. Middleton second, Miller motion, Amy roll call.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye.
All right. Come on, Steve, you've got one more in you.
All right. I'll move that we levy and collect assessments for coming fiscal year for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District 9701, Zones 1, 2, 4.
Second.
Miller motion, Middleton second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins. Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye.
All right. Thanks for that. Both those motions passed. Thank you, Ardeline. All right. Next item, Amy, number six.
Next item, number six. The subject is the Citrus Heights Lighting Assessment District Initiate Proceedings for Fiscal Year 2020-21 Annual Update. And it's recommended to adopt a resolution to initiate proceedings and a resolution for the intention to levy and collect assessments for the Citrus Heights Lighting District.
All right. So the previous ones were landscape maintenance and this is lighting. Is this Leslie or is this Stu?
This is me. Thanks, Mayor. Good evening. Leslie Loomquist, General Services Department. It's very similar to the previous items. We are required each year to update the assessments for the Citrus Heights Lighting District. The Citrus Heights Lighting District includes all parcels in the city and funds the operation and maintenance of the city's 4,678 street and safety lights. No changes are recommended to the assessment rates in conjunction with the annual update. However, over the past fiscal year, new streetlights and infrastructure has been installed as part of various capital improvement projects. Staff has updated the assessments for several individual parcels that are now benefiting from the newly installed streetlights. The first action for your consideration is to adopt the resolution to initiate proceedings pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972. The second action for your consideration is to adopt a resolution of intention to levy and collect the assessments for fiscal year of 2020 for the lighting district, setting the public hearing for August 13.
Thank you, Leslie. Any questions? Again, we do this annually. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move that we initiate proceedings pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act for the Citrus Heights Lighting District.
We have a motion and a second. Amy, roll call.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye.
And finally, I move the resolution of our intention to levy and collect assessments for this coming fiscal year for the Citrus Heights Lighting District.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Amy, roll call.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye. All right. Both of those resolutions passed, 5-0. Next item, Amy, number...
Next item is number seven. The subject is Resolution to Submit a Transactions and Use Tax Sales Tax Measure to the Voters at the November 3, 2020 election and Take Certain Related Actions and Introduction of the Sales Tax Ordinance. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution submitting the sales tax measure to the voters at the November 3, 2020 general municipal election and take related, certain related actions and introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance of the people of the City of Citrus Heights, adding Article 4 Transactions and Use Tax to Chapter 86 of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code.
All right. It looks like City Manager Boyd is going to make the presentation to start anyway, so, sir?
Yes. Well, thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, I am Chris Boyd, the city manager. Tonight's presentation is the culmination of the city's largest survey effort and sincere dedication to our guiding principles of fiscal prudence, government transparency, and local control. It's an honor to present tonight's resolution, which has potential to be a turning point for our community and sets us on a path to fulfill our vision statement, to make Citrus Heights the city of choice for residents and businesses to prosper and thrive and a model of neighborhood engagement. Before we start, I'd like to read the summary of our measure. To provide and preserve services valued by Citrus Heights residents, the City of Citrus Heights is submitting a Transactions and Use Sales Tax Measure to the Voters, proposing a one cent sales tax, generating about $12 million annually, with independent annual audits and citizen oversight, and all funds spent in Citrus Heights. If approved, funds generated by additional local revenue will be used to protect local control of funding that cannot be taken by the state and maintain vital city services to the community, as identified as priorities such as emergency response and preparedness, public safety, homelessness prevention, and supporting local business and job creation, among others. With that summary in mind, we're here to present the results of the largest engagement effort in our city's history, which has provided extremely crucial insight and guided tonight's resolution. To underscore the hundreds of hours of community engagement, listening, and research that went into this resolution, I will be inviting staff to help present a brief summary of the city's budget and the recent COVID-19 budget impacts, our robust efforts to gauge community priorities, the current state of some of our top city service lines, including public safety and roads and infrastructure. Then we'll invite EMC Research to present the results of their third-party scientific research and take a deep dive into their findings related to the priorities of our residents. And then we will be addressing the city's plan to maintain local control in Citrus Heights and address our residents' priorities. To begin, council will recall that since adopting a two-year budget for the city in June of 2019, staff have given multiple finance committee updates, presented a mid-year budget review, hosted a preliminary COVID-19 budget debrief, and most recently presented our updated mid-cycle budget review and 10-year financial forecast. These are summary slides from both the mid-cycle budget review and financial forecast presentation that illustrate the changes we need to overcome, I'm sorry, the challenges that we need to overcome. So during our budget presentation last month, we outlined the estimated economic impacts of a single wave of COVID-19 and its associated health orders, including decreased sales tax revenue and increased expenditures for the city. The first chart here was presented to show a new estimated budget deficit for the fiscal year 2021 of about 2.2 million after the already approved draw from the city's line of credit. In alignment with tonight's resolution and our city's commitment to fiscal prudence, I want to take a moment to point out two things before moving on to the key takeaways of our financial forecast. First, I think it's important to note that before COVID-19, city staff implemented measures to reduce expenses for fiscal year 1920, resulting in $1 million in savings. And that savings has been critical during our resilience through COVID-19, but at the same time, it means we were already running on a very lean budget. Unlike other cities in California, Citrus Heights does not have peripheral programming and associated staff to cut for further savings. Second, I'd like to point out that staff did not recommend an increase in the draw from the city's line of credit despite the COVID-19-related budget setbacks. This is because we take our spending and our line of credit very seriously and have done so long before COVID. Since our city's incorporation, we have known that there would be a period when our expenditures would be higher than our revenues, primarily because of the property tax agreement required by the county to allow our city to incorporate and initiate local control in Citrus Heights. Since the beginning of my tenure as city manager, we have had laser focus on fiscal prudence and strategic savings. This leads me to the 10-year financial forecast that we presented last month. As council will recall, we are forecasting revenue shortfalls for eight of the next 10 years. And this forecast is based on just one wave of COVID-19, a significant drawdown of reserves to the point of depletion and underfunding of capital needs. You will also see this forecast eventually includes the receiving of property tax revenue, which is the first arrow, but that is counteracted by our line of credit payoff, which is the second arrow. As we work through these unprecedented times, it is important to note that cities our size have been left out of all three COVID-19-related stimulus packages passed at the federal level, and our state has an estimated $54 billion deficit. Citrus Heights cannot count on state or federal funding to adequately address our needs. Fiscal prudence and transparency are true virtues that staff and officials with the City of Citrus Heights work tirelessly to honor. We are committed to keeping both our city council as well as the community informed. In last month's budget update message, a snippet shown here is just one example of this transparency. I'd also like to draw attention to the list of cost-saving measures shared in the budget update last month that staff already had in place prior to COVID-19, again, saving $1 million in 1920 alone, including reorganizing departments, holding positions vacant, prioritizing expenditures, and more. With limited resources, it is more crucial than ever that we ensure the city's goals are aligned with resident needs. Under council's direction, staff initiated the largest engagement effort in the city's history to gauge community priorities. To talk more about these robust outreach efforts, I'll hand it over to Megan Huber, Economic Development and Communications Manager. Megan?
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, Mayor Slowey and councilmembers. I'd like to start by showing you the timeline for our community outreach effort to gauge priorities. Back in March 2019... Back in March 2019, as council will recall, you set a strategic planning goal directing staff to identify and launch an initial outreach process to gauge community priorities for maintaining essential services and fiscal stability. Under this direction, staff began execution of the first-ever comprehensive community feedback initiative in Citrus Heights. An engagement effort to gauge community priorities was launched in June 2019 and distributed via the city's website, email, social media, and by phone, mail, and in-person engagement. At an October 2019 strategic planning meeting, a goal was set directing staff to expand and further localize a community outreach process to continue gauging community priorities and gather community feedback for maintaining essential services, local control, and fiscal stability, and present the results to city council. In 2020, we have continued our outreach efforts and adapted our community engagement when COVID-19 hit in March. And tonight, we will be presenting the third-party public opinion research that was conducted recently. After more than a year of community outreach, thousands of residents have engaged by sharing their priorities with the city online, at community events, and neighborhood association meetings, pre-COVID, of course, over the phone, through mail, and by email, resulting in over 1.8 million impressions. Engagement has always been important to you as a city council and to our community. And as you can see, we've leveraged a wide range of channels to reach as many community members as possible. Our robust communications efforts resulted in over 1,700 completed community feedback forms, which asked our community members to rank priorities from most important to least. Right from the beginning, there were clear priorities trending from the community feedback data. Before we move into the research results, we will provide background on a few of the city service lines associated with those priority trends, including public safety and roads and infrastructure. To start, I'd like to pass the presentation over to Chief Ron Lawrence with overview from the Citrus Heights Police Department.
Mayor Slowey, good to the council. Since 2006, your local police department has worked tirelessly, hand-in-hand with our community members and city leaders, to deliver robust and meaningful police services, specifically tailored to the Citrus Heights community. With a core mission to preserve life and protect property, your police department continues to provide exceptional public safety, even through unprecedented times. And we strive to improve the quality of life for Citrus Heights residents and businesses. Our department delivers an effective and efficient public safety model, one that has achieved many awards and formal recognition over the years, and a department that has been studied by other cities as a model and as a premier police department. With our innovative and successful programs deploying social advocates into our community who partner directly with our police officers, CHPD is known as a forward-thinking professional organization. Programs such as our Domestic Bonds Response Team, our Mobile Crisis Support Team, and our Homeless Navigator Program all have proven to be wildly successful partnerships to improve Citrus Heights. These programs help us to mitigate mental health-related calls to police and reduce the long-term impacts of domestic bonds through personalized case management with survivors and their families. Our most publicly visible advocacy efforts are our Homeless Navigator Program, which has housed 311 homeless people in the past two years. This has helped to not only get them into a safe and more hospitable place to live, but also providing them access to appropriate programs such as mental health services, drug and alcohol dependency programs, job skills, and access to benefits to help them live healthy and productive lives. Because of the focused efforts that local control of government and policing delivers, since 2007, CHPD has significantly lowered crime in Citrus Heights by nearly 39%. We've driven down traffic collisions through education, awareness, and enforcement by an amazing 33%. The past three and a half years alone since 2017, we've been successful at lowering overall crime by 18% despite exhaustive challenges brought on by outside influences and changing state laws. Between 2018 and 2019, we decreased violent crimes even with limited resources through innovation and working strategically. But with violent crimes increasing in many communities throughout our state and nation, current resources are not sufficient for the current and future challenges we face to keep Citrus Heights safe. Your police department has always embraced technology, and we take a forward-thinking and innovative approach to policing, which keeps our department at the forefront of cutting-edge innovation in the policing profession. Our small unmanned aerial systems allow us to rapidly deploy high-view aerial intelligence gathering on critical incidents and emergency events. Our highly-successful bait program helped us to capture 158 felony thieves in the past two years, holding criminals accountable and reducing crime in our city. Our text-to-911 system, our use-of-force and de-escalation scenario training simulator, our licensed play creators, and other technologies. In addition to providing effective core police services, such as emergency preparedness, crime prevention, and response to emergencies, the Citrus Heights police culture has always been one of personal and caring service, implementing meaningful programs that make the quality of life in our community better by impacting lives in positive ways. We have programs such as Shop with a Cop, Holiday Referral Program, Police Activities League, Police Explorers, Youth Internships, Volunteer Program, our High School Pathway Programs, Rental Housing Inspection Unit, Citizens Police Academy, Youth Shopping Card Recovery Team, Project Lifesaver, and many others. I'm proud to be your police deputy, and I'm proud to lead with brave men and women who serve this community. Our staff go above and beyond our core police services, and they dedicate themselves to this community because this community has always supported us with unwavering support. But we currently face many unique and unprecedented obstacles in the near term and the long term, making the current funding model for police services not sustainable. I predict that dire impacts are imminent if we don't make immediate changes in funding of police services. The pandemic, as well as recent civil unrest, has caused staffing and resource impacts, adding to our challenge of recruitment and retention efforts. Recruitment and retention of highly-skilled staff are more crucial in police work now than ever before. In these current times, we are experiencing extraordinary challenges finding qualified applicants who want to even get into police work. And our police department experiences an even greater challenge when employees retire or they leave for employment with other long-forstman agencies. We take great care of being a transparent organization, and I would prefer to meet contemporary expectations by having our police officers outfitted with body-worn camera technology, as well as in-car cameras. But the exorbitant cost estimated at nearly half a million dollars annually is simply a cost we cannot afford without making significant cuts elsewhere in the police department. The police department is facing a projected budget shortfall of $1.6 million. To address this, I currently have 17 vacant police positions frozen and unfilled as of April of this year. Six of those unfilled positions are police officers. Two unfilled positions are in our 911 center, and the remaining nine are crucial professional support staff. These positions will likely remain unfilled through June of 2021 and longer if alternative funding sources are not achieved. Your police department, and indeed the entire Citrus Heights city government, have always operated with very lean staffing levels. We maintain vital city core services with fewer staff than many cities of similar population and activity levels. We pride ourselves at being extremely frugal with taxpayer dollars and streamlining operations, but we simply cannot maintain high-quality service on a long-term basis without adequate funding. Our reduced services have already been felt by the community, as many of the programs I've mentioned have already been suspended because of staffing shortages. Further, the acquisition of contemporary police technologies is unattainable without adequate funding sources. Our community has always had a voice in how we deliver police services. With the fighting spirit and entrepreneurial campy philosophy Citrus Heights has always maintained, I'm confident we will continue to overcome and to prevail. However, how we accomplish that and what level of services our city government provides will be dependent upon the funding allocated to achieve our mission and realize our city's vision. Thank you, Mayor Slowey, and members of the council for your thoughtful consideration of tonight's resolution and the future of our great city. I appreciate the time you presented tonight. And with that, I would like to invite Regina Cave, Operations Manager, to speak on the current state of the city's road and infrastructure operating.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief, and good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. As council will recall, in April, staff presented an update on the city's pavement management system, which was a summary and report on the state of repair in our city. The efforts behind that report began in September 2019 with the help of the Men's CE, an expert firm in pavement management, and included a hands-on and field evaluation of every single publicly-maintained street within the city. The data from April's pavement management system update shows that our roads are in need of significant investment. We are leveraging a score of 53 out of 100, which is just three points above the core level of industry standards. Inherited aging infrastructure is one of the downsides of being relatively new city. When maintenance is deferred or roads are quickly repaired with short-term solutions, the result is a compounding long-term cost. The upside, however, is that unlike unincorporated areas, our city has local control and can strategically identify and thoughtfully address these problems. We have heard our residents time and again, and staff agrees, the Citrus Heights community deserves infrastructure that is clean and safe, and we need drivable streets. I'd like to explain just how costly it will be for our city in the long term if we do not stop the regional trend of temporary solutions for our inherited infrastructure issues. This first graph shows the city's projected deferred maintenance costs for the next 10 years. As it stands, our current budget shows for only $2.1 million to be spent annually on paving our roads. You will see our deferred maintenance needs are estimated to be $54 million as of today. At $2.1 million per year, or $21.4 million over the next 10 years, not only do our costs compound and reach nearly $187 million in 2029, but the roadway conditions actually worsen. So drawing your attention now to the line graph, you will note that our current spending levels, our grade of 53, is illustrated by that red line, which is already below the industry standard declines to 35, which is poor by 2029. That green line represents the industry standard for what is an acceptable average PCI, which is 70. We start well below the industry goal, and in 10 years, we will be even lower. These projections seem drastic, but city staff are committed to transparency, and the reality is that costs of deferred maintenance will continue to compound year over year, as well as deterioration. As always, staff do aim to deliver on our mission of fiscal prudence by spending funds strategically, and when it comes to adequately addressing the state of our roads, current funding levels are just not sufficient. The graph on the screen now illustrates the outcome of increasing our annual investment from $2.1 million to $9.3. As you can see, this funding scenario stabilizes our road grade by supporting an aggressive pavement restoration program on residential streets, which will pair with how staff leverage dollars from federal grants to address our major roadways like Greenback, Sunrise, Madison, and San Juan, amongst others. Again, in honor of full transparency, even an infusion of an additional $7.2 million annually still does not fix everything, but it does push us past the point of continuing the systematic problem of short-term solutions. In conclusion, when we look at the recent research of our pavement conditions, industry standards, and most importantly, the desires of our community, the city's current investment capabilities are not enough to adequately address our aging infrastructure. If something doesn't change, our roads will continue to deteriorate, and the looming costs of deferred maintenance will continue to compound at an overwhelming rate. Mayor Slowey, members of the council, I appreciate your time and hope I've provided an effective summary of the current state of our roads and infrastructure. With that, I would like to pass this back to Megan Huber.
Thank you, Regina. Before we head into the research portion of tonight's presentation, I'd like to round out the snapshots of our fiscally prudent efforts by highlighting examples where city staff has really excelled at advancing our city's vision on a limited budget. I'd like to remind council of a few ways city staff have responded to COVID-19, each initiative bringing with it resource challenges that staff have been able to overcome and serve our community during this unprecedented pandemic. Since March, city staff have adapted quickly to keep all service lines open. Here you see our chief building official taking permits online, so confirming no service interruption there. Launched our Great Plate Program, averaging over 3,500 meals a week to local seniors, distributed over 13,000 free masks to local businesses, supported local business by translating state and county guidelines, hosting live remote Q&As about relief options, and creating new communication channels to reach and support our businesses. Also, the communications team created a new online COVID-19 section with senior resources, resident resources, public health information, and more. While staff have maximized resources for important COVID-related initiatives, we have also continued to move important projects forward. A few examples of how staff have been stewarding the future include Sunrise Tomorrow, the specific plan to densify and diversify Sunrise Mall, New Sylvan, the 11.3-acre property at the geographical center of our city on Auburn Boulevard that is poised to be a cultural and social hub for the community, road improvement projects like the Auburn Boulevard and Greenback Lane Complete Street Plan and the Mariposa Avenue State Routes Plan, which is in Phase 4, ongoing support for local nonprofits through our CBD chief funding opportunities, and more. While staff have been adapting to a brand-new work environment and budgetary restrictions brought on by the COVID-19 pandemic, the dedication to stewardship and moving important projects forward has not altered at all. So moving into research and findings, huge thanks goes out to the thousands of residents that provided feedback on their priorities, either through our engagement effort or the third-party public opinion research. I'd like to emphasize to council that this has been a community-driven process aimed at upholding our vision for maintaining local control in Citrus Heights to ensure that we remain a self-reliant city that is safe and fiscally stable. In fact, recent professional public opinion research found that up to 71% of respondents would support a local measure in Citrus Heights to maintain local control and vital services. To give more information around this figure and others, I'd like to now invite the EMC Research team to share more information on their findings.
Thank you, Megan. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Emily Goodman. I am the principal at EMC Research. And I am getting my screen set up here to show you a presentation that we recently conducted, a statistically-balanced survey of likely voters in the City of Citrus Heights. And I'm going to run through that data. So a quick note on methodology. This is very fresh data. We conducted this survey at the end of June, heading into early July. We have a total of 404 interviews. That's a margin of error about plus or minus just under five percentage points. This was a live telephone survey conducted by professional interviewers, and we, of course, included landlines and cellphones. A note on context and timing. Many of you, all of us really, are aware of this, but for posterity, we just wanted to note kind of where things were in the world and in Citrus Heights at the time that we conducted the survey, to the extent, you know, it affects public opinion. This was during Weeks 14 and 15 of the coronavirus shelter-in-place period. And then leading up to the field period, the demonstrations around the death of George Floyd were happening across the country and the world. A few overall key findings before we get into the data. We see that voters feel positively about the way things are going in Citrus Heights, the quality of life and the job that the city and elected officials are doing. We see that homelessness and poverty are top concerns among voters. And we do see that a majority of voters, likely voters in the city, see a need for additional funding. The good news, we see that support today for a potential local The good news, we see that support today for a potential local funding measure is above the simple majority, 50-plus-one threshold needed for passage, and when we share additional information about what the measure could potentially pay for, we see that support for the measure solidifies. Looking at how voters feel about the way that things are going in Citrus Heights, 58% of voters say that the city is headed in the right direction compared to 20% who stay off on the wrong track. I think it's helpful to provide a little bit of context for this. This question, we ask it in basically every survey that we do across California, across the Bay Area, and beyond, and we're seeing this question actually have pretty volatile results. So early on in the COVID response or COVID pandemic, we saw, you know, a very high rating for right direction because people felt like, you know, we're flattening the curve, we are literally headed in the right direction. As the cases have climbed, we've seen this number kind of drop off quite a bit, but nevertheless, it's remained pretty stable here in Citrus Heights with 58% of voters, so a strong majority saying that they think that the city is headed in the right direction. When we ask about most important problems, this is an open-ended question, what's the most important problem facing the city today? We see homelessness and poverty are the top mentions. So we're coding these, we've categorized things into like responses, and that's what we're showing today, not the actual verbatim responses. But, you know, even with coronavirus and COVID kind of as the backdrop to what's going on in our daily lives, we still see that homelessness is the top concern for voters. We asked respondents to rate the city on a variety of things, including the overall quality of city services, the job the city is doing overall, the safety of the city. We see overwhelmingly positive ratings on a variety of issues here. With a net positive, that takes into consideration, you know, the excellent or good, that's positive, against the only fair or poor, which we're considering negative. So it's a net positive of 56 percentage points. The job the city is doing overall, net positive of plus 40. Safety in the city, voters are feeling very positively. The job the city is doing responding to the COVID-19 or coronavirus outbreak, we see very positive ratings as well. And then management of city money, among those who are able to give a rating on that, we see 34% aren't able, you know, folks don't really know or don't have an opinion on it, but of those who can, we see that voters think that you're doing a good job managing city money. The ratings are pretty consistent with past research. I should have noted and saw some from layer faces that we have conducted research for you in the past, and so we were able to track some of that data against the data that we have here today. So we actually see very consistent findings compared to a survey last year, and actually a little bit of an increase in how voters feel that the city is doing, the quality of city services, and the management of money. Looking at some voter priorities, we write kind of a laundry list of things that are going on. We see that Citrus Heights city government transparent and accountable, overwhelmingly priority for voters, 74% say that's a very high priority, another 14% say that's a somewhat high priority, so in total, 88% of voters are prioritizing keeping the city government transparent and accountable. Maintaining 911 emergency response and police services, and maintaining 911 emergency response times, kind of tested this a couple of different ways to see how voters reacted, and we see no real difference, but still very high priority for voters. Attracting and retaining qualified police officers, 83% of voters prioritize that. Maintaining school safety and security, reducing and preventing homelessness, also high priorities for voters. A whole other slide here, we see that, you know, everything's important to people, which isn't a huge surprise, but when we look at kind of how these are ranked, it helps us understand what voters are really caring about. So improving public safety and transparency with technology, including police body cameras, 81% of voters prioritize that. You can see kind of the next tier of items here around maintaining emergency communication systems, supporting local businesses, attracting and retaining local businesses, and keeping public space safe and clean, and maintaining essential city services, all a high priority for voters. Addressing COVID-19 and other public health emergencies, you know, this looks like it's at the bottom relative to everything else, but when you look at it kind of on its own in isolation, you know, 71% of voters are saying that this is a high priority, and also it's worth noting, you know, how things potentially have shifted in the last few weeks, even since this data came out. Lastly here, we have some other priorities that are still important to people, but you see kind of the dark blue, the very high priority, drop them off a little bit, even though voters still do care about this. Maintaining anti-gang and drug prevention programs, emergency disaster preparedness, filling potholes, investing in social services, neighborhood policing and things like that, and protecting local control, which again, isn't, that it's not a priority, it's just when you compare it to the other items, not as resonant on the intensity. We see that a lot of the priorities are pretty consistent with what we saw in the survey last year, specifically the transparency and accountability here, 88% now compared to 91% when you take into consideration the margin of error. All of this is very consistent and essentially unchanged, if you will, even since last year's Likewise here, there's a little bit more difference in some of these other items, you know, filling potholes and repairing streets at 72% now compared to 83%, maintaining anti-gang and drug prevention programs, community policing, I mean, some of this is because some of these other items are just more important to people at this time. We asked voters whether or not there's a perceived need for funding, and again, this is perception, not necessarily reality, and 55% of voters say that the city has at least some need for additional funding. This is a really important data point when we consider the viability of a potential measure, because we use this question as well as the support for the actual measure itself or hypothetical measure that we'll show you here in a sec, but this helps understand kind of that right direction around track question that we showed at the beginning, the voter priorities, the perception of funding, along with that initial ballot test. We see kind of where general sentiment is, and the fact that, you know, a measure like this needs a simple majority, and we see over a majority perceiving a need for additional funding for the city, this is a really important and promising data point as we consider viability. So looking at reaction to a potential measure, what you see in the gray box is the actual language that we presented to respondents on the phone. So to protect local control with funding that can't be taken by the state, maintain 911 emergency response, crime investigation prevention, school safety, pothole and street repair, homeless prevention, local business support, other and other essential city services, shall the city establish a one-cent sales tax? So we see that initial support for a potential measure is at 66% total yes, that includes the handful of folks who are undecided, and when we push them, lean toward yes or no, 4% lean toward voting yes, so that's where we get from 62, solid yes, up to 66% total yes. 28% of voters would vote no today, and this isn't, the yes vote is important, but the no vote is also important, because if you think about a majority threshold, you know, we don't want the no vote to be creeping up anywhere close to that threshold line, and it's not. We did want to provide a little bit more information about the subgroups and support for this potential measure within some of the demographic and geographic subpopulations within the city. So we see that women especially, here, second from this first bar graph, 74% of voters of women are supportive, old and young alike. We see older men, a majority of older men, younger men, a little bit more supportive than the older men, but really, the takeaway here is across the board, we see high support, well over a majority across demographic groups and party registration as well. Homeowners and renters alike, we see renters are a bit more supportive, but homeowners are as well. We see that people who are new to the city, as well as longtime residents, are very supportive, and then support across the city. We looked at the city council districts here, support is the strongest in Districts One, Three, and Five, but in every district across the city, we see support above a majority. We provided some additional information about the measure, sort of themes and ways to package and present this, and we see that being self-reliant and local control, and we talk about that as a theme, 76% for three-quarters of voters find that to be a convincing reason to vote for the measure. Talking about fiscal oversight, 71% find that to be very convincing. Public safety, homelessness, streets and roads, also very important, and then, you know, preparedness, this related to emergency preparedness and things like that, we see 60% of voters find that to be a convincing reason to support the measure. So when we asked again, after we provided some additional information, as well as that, you know, list of things that the measure could potentially pay for, we see support really solidify well above the majority threshold needed for passage, and a total of 71% voting yes after additional information, the 26% voting no. And then we wanted to show just the breakdown for city council district in that second vote, the after additional information is presented, and as we saw initially, support is pretty strong across the city. It solidified everywhere with, again, Districts One, Three, and Five being the most supportive, but really support strong across the board. So a few quick conclusions, happy to answer any additional questions. We see that a one-cent sales tax measure appears viable today. We do want to acknowledge that growing uncertainty around public health and the economy, you know, continuing the great work that you all have done so far on engaging the community and other stakeholders is critical as things continue to shift, as they will. And then when we look at kind of what voters are prioritizing, you know, maintaining local control and essential city services, investing in public safety are really important priorities to voters. So that concludes the slides, but I'm happy to answer additional questions.
Thank you, Emily. Appreciate it. Who is next on the presentation? Is it Ryan?
Yes. Thank you, Emily. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. As city attorney, my role, along with our city clerk, is to ensure the process as outlined in the elections code is followed with the proposed measure. I'd like to take a few minutes to discuss that. First, I have reviewed the proposed language of the measure and find it legally valid. Some of the basic requirements are that it must be 75 words or less, must be clear to voters, and must state the amount of revenue to be raised. What is being proposed here is a general tax as opposed to a special tax. Thus, it will require 50% plus one vote of the public to pass. In association with this measure, the council has the opportunity to submit an argument in favor or against the measure. The argument will appear in the voter guide. The resolution tonight states that the mayor would have the authority to draft and sign the argument, and gives him flexibility to have four others sign it as well. The resolution also authorizes the mayor to prepare a rebuttal argument should one be necessary. Another aspect of elections code, which we will be adhering to, is the 10-day review period. Election materials will be available for public review with the city clerk's office for a period of 10 calendar days immediately following the filing deadline for submission of these materials. Furthermore, I will be required to draft a city attorney impartial analysis. The proposed resolution directs me to draft an analysis of the measure, which will appear in the voter guide. In the impartial analysis, I will evaluate the legality of the measure and address its scope. Finally, let me discuss the mechanisms for passage of the ordinance. It starts tonight with a resolution to call for the election, which requires a four-fifth vote of the council, followed by an ordinance to add the sales tax to the city's municipal code. The resolution and first reading of the ordinance are on the agenda for tonight. If the first reading of the ordinance is approved, the second reading will be brought back for action at the next regular city council meeting. Of course, it would not go into effect unless there was a majority vote in favor from the voting public in November. Thank you, and I turn the presentation over to city manager Boyd.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, well, thank you, Ryan. So Mayor Slowey and members of the city council, my hope is that we've illustrated the countless hours and care that has gone into tonight's resolution. Before we move to our recommended action, I'd like to remind council of our city's powerful mission and vision statements. The city of Citrus Heights is committed to providing high-quality, economical, responsive city services to our community. Our vision is that Citrus Heights will be the city of choice for residents and businesses to prosper and thrive, and a model of neighborhood engagement. Citrus Heights has been and always will be a city that takes its future into its own hands. To remain self-reliant and preserve and provide the services our community prioritizes, expects, and deserves, we present tonight a resolution for a local one-cent sales tax measure. The measure is being proposed to provide funding that cannot be taken by the state of California, and is to be used only for local Citrus Heights services. In addition to our mission and vision statements, council also set the three-year strategic goals you see on the screen for our city. This vision for the future is ambitious but not unattainable. Every decision, action, and initiative we have presented this evening has been rooted in achieving these goals. When the goals displayed here were put in place in 2017, we had no idea how different our world would be today. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge how difficult this year has been. I understand these are unprecedented times, and with that comes a level of uncertainty. However, the data shows that our community, even in the midst of COVID, is still aligned with the goals our council has set, and we need additional resources to continue to deliver. So with that, I'm honored to present to you tonight's resolution and the first reading of the ordinance. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, city manager Boyd. I appreciate it. So what I want to do here to have a little bit of process to this is I know we've received some written comments, and I'm sure we're going to have some folks raising their hand to speak directly to us in that three minutes. Before I take that public comment, I would like to reach out to the council. I don't want your overall opinion and, you know, statements, I want if you have specific questions about the measure, like to go ahead and get those on the record and answers to you, and then we'll jump over to public comment. So, and I'll just call on each one of you, because my iPad's acting up and I can't see you anymore, so, Jeannie, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay. Brett?
No.
Steve?
No, three clerked out.
Portia?
No.
Okay, I think I got you all. All right, so for members of the audience, here's how we're going to do this. It looks like, of course, I saw the picture and then it disappeared, so I think there's about 30 folks in there, and it looks like there's a few of you with your hands up. So what we're going to do is rather than me call a name and then Amy having to go ahead and unmute you, I'm going to have our city clerk just call on you, and again, you get three minutes. Just understand, we can't see what order you all raised your hands in, so we're going to go top of the page to the bottom, and I don't know if it's alphabetical or how it is, but we're not going to get into who got their hand up first. I'm just going to turn it over to our city clerk to call your name. She will send you a quick pop-up that says, you know, take yourself off mute, and then you'll get your three minutes. So, Amy, I'm going to turn it over to you to start calling our folks.
The first person is Diane Abbott, so I have allowed you to unmute yourself.
Hello, mayor, and city council members. Again, my name is
Again, my name is Diane Ebbett Reilly, and I'm here in support of the new tax measure being valid for the November election. I have a great big long written speech that was all prepared, but EMC research has said it all for me, so I'm just going to speak from my heart. First, I want to say that I am a member or a board member of HART, the homelessness resource team, and I'm a member of that because I want to work with homeless issue that is in Citrus Heights. City has worked hard to be a big part to help with homeless situation, and the results have been seen in 2018 and 2019, the reduction in homelessness. Also, I am a volunteer with Citrus Heights Police Department. Police Department again has shown results with decrease in violent crime for 2019. With the work that the city is doing with revitalization of Sunrise Mall, Sylvan Center or Sylvan Corners, they're trying to bring back business and growth and jobs into the community. However, with all of this happening with COVID-19 and also with closing retail stores, the restaurants and all of this, the sales tax dollars have gone way down, and there's no way that city can continue the services that have been using or have been servicing community. And so in order to keep or maintain those services and in some areas improve, we need to have that sales tax. So please vote in favor of the sales tax for November ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. And one last thing, after you've spoken, you actually need to go in and remove your hand, because otherwise we won't know that, thank you, all right. Amy, back to you.
The next person is Kermit Schultz. I have now allowed you to speak, you can unmute your microphone.
Good evening, Mayor Slowey, council members, Kermit Schultz. Just to provide a little background for those in the community that don't have very much knowledge of myself, family, we've lived and worked and owned a business in Citrus Heights since 1980. If my math's correct, that's about forty years minus a few years that we lived in nearby communities. I have had a business in Citrus Heights since 1990, and I have been a partner in Stone's Gamblin' Hall and Sammy's Restaurant, as well as similar business in the San Diego area for the last six years. The total employee team members that work in these businesses range in the neighborhood of 500. We are here because we believe in the economic development of this city, its leadership in the entire community. This is our city of choice. I also participated in the incorporation battle to win the right to cityhood. I doubt any of us can remember all the names of those of us that were involved or did what we could either financially or physically, but I was there, and I think Councilmember Bruin's can attest to that. Throughout all those years, I've watched with a great deal of pride the accomplishments of the city council members, the city manager, our city stat, and the entire community. I'm never going to forget the editorial in the major newspaper that of the time around twenty-five years ago, the stated Citrus Heights will end up like a beggar on the corner with a tin cup. By all known, nothing could have been further from the truth, and it's because of the leadership we have had and do presently have, the community support for all these years. I watched our city manager when he was chief of the police for eleven years and the quality and the professionalism he brought to that department, but he's had to take over and deal with since that period, when he became as now the city manager, then in the most difficult and trying of times. It's been as admirable a job that anyone could expect or ask for. If he believes our community needs to take on this one cent increase and is bringing it forth before you tonight, then there's no doubt in my mind of what he has done, his homework, and we all need and should give behind him, it's pretty obvious by the presentation that's been made this evening. In closing, I like the way the ballot language reads, I strongly support this one percent sales tax increase to help continue the quality of life the city has provided us, and I urge this council to do the same. I know this is a difficult time to increase taxes, our business. My personal business has been shut down now for more than three months, so I feel the pain, as I know other businesses and the citizens of this community do as well. However, my concerns are by not doing what is necessary, the quality I spoke of may disappear. Together, we can see to it that doesn't happen. Thank you for your time, appreciate you listening to me. Everyone stay healthy and safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Kermit.
The next speaker is Jillian Antun. I have now unmuted you, you can unmute and speak.
Good evening, Mayor Slowey and city council members. My name is Jillian Antun, and I'm here in support of the ballot measure proposed this evening. I work for the Rockland Academy family of schools, and for the past two years, I have been spearheading the work of opening our newest campus in York City's new charter of public school, American River Collegiate Academy. We are excited to be opening our school with kindergarteners and first graders this fall, and we will grow to eventually serve kindergarten through public praise, parents and families in Citrus Heights. We did not anticipate opening our brand-new school in the middle of a pandemic, and I will tell you as a school leader, I completely understand the impacts of COVID-19, and so much of tonight's presentation resonated with me and the challenges we are facing as well. I am not here representing the school tonight, but because after two years of working in and with the community, and with families, students, and other stakeholders in Citrus Heights, I personally have come to care really deeply about this city and the people who live here, and because I now have a vested interest in the health, safety, and well-being of the students and families who will attend our school in the years to come. We chose York City for our newest campus because we know kids in Citrus Heights deserve and need an excellent public school choice. We also chose Citrus Heights because of your history of ongoing and relentless commitment to continue improvement, and because of your commitment to enhancing the services, the amenities, and the quality of life for residents. This proposal is in line with that commitment, and I do support it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jillian.
The next is Bill Van Duker. You are now able to unmute your mic.
Good evening, Mayor Slowey and members of the council. I'm Bill Van Duker, business owner and resident of Citrus Heights for more than forty years. I support this proposal, and here's why. For many years, the Citrus Heights, if we wanted to get something done, we had to do it ourselves. They incorporated, instead of saying, yes, that's a good idea at the county level, they fought us every step of the way, cleared the U.S. Supreme Court. If we wanted to do something about Sayonara, we had to do it ourselves. If we wanted better law enforcement and public safety, we had to do it ourselves. We had to form our own police department. If we wanted a place for the community to gather, we did it ourselves. We built a community center, which, if my memory serves correctly, we had over four-hundred events the first year it was built. But right now, we're at a crossroads. If we want to thrive going forward, we have to do it ourselves. We have to create a source of money that the state or others cannot take. The county is in trouble, we know that, and the money that was raised through Measure Eight, the loans, we give away more than we get back. And we know that the state has already, as we mentioned, is $54 billion in the hole this year, and of course, the federal government is dealing in figures in the trillions of dollars. So going forward, we can, we're at a crossroads. We can either cut and struggle, or we can give our city the resources to do the things that will help us excel. I know a cent seems like a lot, but I did some calculations, and I think it'll cost me someplace between $54 and $69 a year. That's a very small investment for what this will bring to our city for the future. I think the city needs these resources to continue to make us a great city, and I urge support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Next is Albert Fox, you can now unmute your mic.
Good evening, council. As one said, when you're in a hole, you need to stop digging. You need to move up, you need to move forward, and I think that's where we are as a city. I speak tonight in support of this resolution. As stated in the city manager's introduction, the one-cent tax would be ours, it's nobody else's. We collect it, we control it, and we determine its use. We would not be giving the money to the county. We spread out over other county jurisdictions for programs that do not directly impact us, would not help our city. We would only see about fifty cents of each dollar we give them in return for the money. We would not be paying for outside money managers to control our funds. We would not pay interest payments to pay our loans and other expenditures for projects and things that were not ours, but that went to other jurisdictions. We would not be supporting non-cities, non-city projects, but those projects that directly impact Citrus Heights, and they're determined by us, not someone else. City staff has done a tremendous job in their community outreach. The community responses are unbelievable in supporting these goals and this potential tax increase. This is our opportunity to have our own sales tax income, which is ours, to do the things we need to do and to move forward as a city. It is ours alone to be used and to our benefit, to those goals and projects that we identified, and that are backed by our citizens. I urge you tonight to give a five-member vote in support of this. It's not time to look back, it's not time to think of what used to be. It's time for us to move forward as a city and get prepared for what we can do in the coming years, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Al.
Next, it's under Samsung, but it's the email that begins with Cobalt, so if that is you, you are, you can unmute your mic, if you could state your name.
Hi, I'm Kendall Smallwood. I just wanted to speak a little bit about the youth programs in the Citrus Heights community. I was an explorer, a PAL advisor, youth advisor, volunteer intern, anything you could pretty much think of, and I just want to say that the youth programs are a tremendous part of the community because they help youths sculpt their freshmanism, their communication skills, they learn organization, responsibility, and respect for pretty much anyone in the culture. I had a lot of experience with the department, because I was in their youth programs for about eight years, and I don't think that would be where I'm at today, and I know my brother wouldn't be either, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the kids that I knew when I was a youth advisor and PAL advisor, and what their parents told me about their transformation when they came in PAL. They weren't getting good grades, and they were kind of on the wrong side, getting in trouble a lot at school, things along those lines, and parents used to tell me that when they got their kids into PAL or the leadership programs, and what we ended up seeing probably about six, seven months in is their grades started going up to like A's and B's, they weren't getting in trouble at school anymore, their behavior completely changed, they were respectful to other children, to adults, to their parents, like they weren't arguing near me as much, just their attitudes completely did like a 360, just because they had a good foundation, because a lot of kids that I saw throughout those programs, sometimes they come from broken homes or neighborhoods that are minorities or poorer than other neighborhoods, and they don't have a lot of things to do to help them with leadership and cultivating characteristics such as those, and I just saw a lot of kids transform into people, respectful people and respectful kids, and I myself had a lot of experience, because I had a bad attitude growing up, and when I went through all those programs, it completely dissipated, it changed who I am, it changed my personality, I just got a double major at that state, like I knew where I was going because of what those programs did for me and the experience that they gave me. So I just want to make sure everyone knows those programs are really, really helpful, and it gives kids the potential to see what they can achieve and what they can do in their future and know that it's within reach if they just try. But that's all I wanted to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kendall.
The next is Tim Schaefer, and you can unmute your mic.
Thank you, council, Mayor Slowey, appreciate that. You know, when I think about this, this sales tax increase, I'm thinking about the median income in Citrus Heights being $54,000 per household. That's typically for two incomes. That's not high income. Those people in the room here are probably exceeding that. I certainly, the sales tax would hurt me at all, but I am thinking about the guy that just wants to get up in the morning to go to work, and he is making no mortgage, and we're talking about raising his taxes significantly. So I'm going to oppose this measure. I think it's a poor time, we have unprecedented unemployment, and it's just, it's not the right time. The Sacramento County Transportation Agency, I recognize the very same thing, when they overturn, will decide not to pursue a pass-in sales tax, but I can promise you, that's coming back for the next election, and I'm sure that'll be on the ballot. So now, if this passes, we'll have eight and three-quarters plus another half a percent, so now we'll be a bang and a quarter. So I just want to go on the record saying that I oppose this tax increase. I think we, I think there could be a better time to do this, but not now. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
The next is Bruce Lee, you can now unmute your mic.
Thank you very much. Mayor Slowey, the council, appreciate your time today. Let me introduce myself. My name is Bruce Lee, I'm the president of the Sacramento Tax Pairs Association, and we were the lead organization in the recent defeat of Measure A, the pass-in sales tax, which I believe was not a good idea at an even worse time. And we are not against taxes in general, and let me just say also, very good presentation, very thorough presentation, Citrus Heights is a delightful community, and the presentation was well-organized and well-orchestrated, and undoubtedly a lot of the public comment is also well-organized and well-orchestrated. The concern that I have at this juncture, because I just learned of this like two days ago, and I'm actually out of state right now, and thank goodness for Zoom, I can charm charm in, there appears to be a bit of a rush in the process. This appears to be a forever tax unless the voters decide to rescind it. It appears that today is the first hearing, to the best of my knowledge, I could be wrong, and in three weeks, you're going to have the next hearing, and then there's going to be a big rush to meet deadlines to get it onto the ballot. And I'm sure that many people support the measure, but a certain 404 people out of eighty-eight thousand people is less than one-half a percent. And unfortunately, sales taxes are regressive in their very nature, and you know better than I, I don't know, but you know, is there a strong Hispanic community in Citrus Heights? If so, the Latino Roundtable and others came out strongly against the regressive tax of Measure A. Is there a black community in Citrus Heights to some extent? I don't know. I know NWACP, the National Action Network, came out very strongly and vehemently against this regressive tax. Are there unemployed in Citrus Heights or elderly or single parents in Citrus Heights? I would dare say there are, as everywhere. I would dare say there are, as everywhere. Polling showed that the one-half cent tax would fail if there was any organized opposition, and hence was pulled off the ballot among other reasons. So I would just ask you to take those factors into consideration. I wanted to learn more about the tax myself, although three weeks is a very quick timeframe. And frankly, having a lower tax rate than your neighbors is a competitive advantage perhaps. But I do appreciate your time and your wisdom and this measure, and this one that raises these concerns. And I look forward to your deliberations on all of this, and we stand ready to help you any way we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce.
The next is Danielle Casey. You can unmute your mic.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the Council. My name is Danielle Casey. I'm the executive vice president for the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. It is my pleasure to address you tonight on my own behalf and on behalf of Barry Broome, the president and CEO of GSEC. However, I would like to clarify for the record that I am here speaking to you as an economic development professional, and my comments do not represent that of any individual member of our Board of Directors of GSEC, nor does it represent any position by the GSEC Board as a body. It is a 501(c)(3) organization, and any position on a matter like this would require consideration and vote by the Board, and this item has not been brought before them. That being said, between Barry and myself, we have combined 45-plus years of economic development experience in a wide variety of communities across the country. And we believe the ability for Citrus Heights to collect additional tax revenue to support the type of services and programs outlined in this measure are paramount. Communities in our region have been restricted significantly by the state. We need the ability to bring in funding to address issues like homelessness and infrastructure, as well as invest in job growth. And the stimulus packages stably have completely overlooked cities like Citrus Heights due to size, arguably, and these are the cities that need it the most. This is a highly common model in other competitive states and communities across the country, such as in Texas, where local economic development organizations through half-cent sales tax measures have the resources needed to bring jobs to their communities and attract a number of California business expansions, just like this week's Tesla factory announcing 3,000 jobs in Austin. Citrus Heights has the opportunity, with some of the great initiatives underway like Sunrise Tomorrow, to be on the forefront of recovery from this pandemic. The areas of priority identified in the measure are all critical, but I do want to applaud the community's efforts in supporting job growth and local business in particular, which also aligns with GSEC's strategic efforts. Businesses and employees want a safe place to live and work, and investment must be made to bring quality employment opportunities. This has been underscored again and again in conversations I regularly have with commercial real estate brokers, national site selection consultants, and of course, businesses exploring the region. I, as an economic development professional, expressing my perspective, do hope the Council will move to present this measure to the voters, and I look forward to the benefits it will bring to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Danielle. So Amy, I don't see any other hands raised, but I believe we may have gotten a couple of written requests in. Is that true?
Yes, we do. So I can go ahead and read those now.
Yeah, we'll, we'll stop taking the live comments because I don't see any hands up, and we'll go to what we received via writing.
So, public comment from Joseph Solinsky. He states austerity is the better tool to address budget shortfalls when people are unemployed, not the hardship of additional expense. Delay improvements, wage increases, and capital expenditures don't drive shoppers outside our small city for already slow commerce in 2020. The next public comment is from David Warren. He states, "I speak in opposition to the tax proposal, not because the city does not need more revenue to fund essential services, but instead because at this time, the proposed sales tax makes no sense. A sales tax is a regressive tax because it takes a larger percentage of income from low-income earners than from high-income earners. A sales tax has its most significant impact on hourly employees or self-employed individuals who are now most negatively impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, especially in light of the Senate Republicans' refusal to continue the $600 per week unemployment benefit. Please answer the question with mandatory business shutdown orders. Where will people be making purchases which will generate sales tax revenue? A cursory examination of the both pandemic, spread forecasts, as well as the history of business closures here due to COVID-19, make it clear that there will be insufficient sales to generate any significant tax revenue, as with the gasoline tax for road repairs until such time as a vaccine is available, which at best will not occur for at least next year. Finally, which magnanimous voters does the city council believe will vote to support a tax increase during a period of such economic instability? Before costs are incurred, the city must determine whether or not the voters would support a tax increase when the majority of city residents are wage insecure. Although new revenue is necessary, the proposal is doomed to failure and is a waste of municipal resources." The next comment is from Bill and Kathy Cook. "Bill and I both support this increase. There will be talk about this increase, but if Citrus Heights residents think about what our city represents to us, we want the city to be clean, safe, and proud to be living here, but this takes money. With the Sunrise Mall down and this crazy virus, businesses are closing and money is getting tighter. So where are we going to get the money to keep improving the roads in our city? With Antelope, Greenback Lane, Auburn Boulevard, and Sunrise Boulevard with new landscape, Center Island weeds that need attention and no money coming in, weeds are getting taller, and this is welcome sign to Citrus Heights. We're wanting them to come shop here, show where our dollars, tax dollars are going. Again, we just want our city to be the city that the community is very proud of and glad we're living here." The next comment is from Rosa Umbach. "There are so many reasons that I oppose this proposed tax increase for the following reasons. Business closure and reduction in access in hours, job loss has affected all our community, family stress due to isolation and job loss causing an inability for some families to pay rent or mortgage, including the closure of daycare and schools, and additional costs associated with masks from finding them to purchasing them to new health issues caused by wearing them. Our community cannot take another financial hit now. It's just the wrong time." The next comment is by David Casperick. "I strongly oppose the submission of a sales and use tax measure for the November 3, 2020 general municipal election and all related actions. Now is not the time to increase taxes. With the 25-year annual property tax payment to Sacramento County that began in 1996 almost complete, the city needs to show its proper stewardship and those additional funds before asking for more from its citizens." The next comment is from Oleg Shishko. "Thank you for the work that you do. I would like to urge you to please vote against placing the tax increase on the ballot. This tax increase comes at a bad time when many of our fellow citizens are economically stressed. Furthermore, the measure does not provide much in citizen oversight in how our tax dollars will be spent. While a citizen oversight committee will be created if this measure passes, this oversight committee does not have any power to effect change if it determines that the city is improperly spending the money. A more appropriate citizen oversight mechanism would be to add a five-to-10-year sunset or reauthorization for us, the citizens of Citrus Heights, to reauthorize this tax if we believe the city appropriately spent the money we gave them. I urge you to please amend the measure to add a sunset to this tax, or please vote to not add it to the ballot." And that concludes the written comment that I have received.
All right. Thank you, Amy. I'm going to take one quick look, make sure there's nobody else out there. There's one. You're kind of late, but we'll take you, but this will be the last one.
So Greg Sheeler, you can now unmute your mic.
Thank you for fitting me in at the last minute. Been listening to all the conversation people about the sales tax. In the last few years, I've noticed a trend in Citrus Heights. We've spent an awful lot of money on a new city hall building, all the yards, vehicles, community center, police station, all these things that have come up in a relatively short period of time. And I recognize there's a big cost to that. But I don't see much cost containment going on, and maybe it's hidden from me. But my personal experience is I recently had to get a permit at City Hall, and that process involved multiple people. And it just seems to me the operation is not run very efficiently. And as a, with the recent line of credit and the expenditures on that, I just have a feeling that this will just be one more thing. It'll be added on. It'll go forever. And then in a very short period of time, there'll be another 1% sales tax increase. So I'm just against it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, so that concludes the public comment. I know each of us, council members, have some comments to say. So what I, what I figure I'll do is I'll just, rather than y'all jump in at once, I'm going to go ahead and call on each one of you. I give you each time to either ask questions, you know, clarifications, state your opinion, and then we'll move forward. So Mr. Daniels, I'll start with you.
Well, thank you. You know, I want to thank staff for the presentation, city manager for the presentation, some very compelling, definitely compelling issues. And, you know, we're in a tough spot. We're in a tough spot. And I am just, I have so many things pulling at me in different directions with this that it's, you know, I want to first talk about the external part of it. Here's my concerns with the external part of it. Right now, there's an attack on Prop 13 for businesses, and I'm very concerned that that's going to pass. And what's going to happen is our businesses are going to incur costs throughout the state. There's all kinds of numbers, but it's about $10 billion. And those costs are not going to be paid by just the business. Those costs are going to be passed on to all of us. And so we're going to see higher costs there with everything that's going on with the virus and whatnot throughout the state. I have no doubt in my mind that we're going to see new taxes coming in on the state level, one way or another. And so we're just going to get a little bit more of the apple. And, and then here we're coming along with a sales tax increase idea. And we're coming along at a very tough time, and I did hear some very good arguments there about the timing of everything. I understand bringing this forward right now. I understand the issues that we're facing, that they aren't very good. I think that it's important that our citizens know why we got here, and some of that was touched on earlier. The main reason that we're here today, I feel, is the extortion payment that we've had to pay the county to be a city. This will be over in just a couple of years, thank God. But in the process, over a 25-year period, we have had to give them approximately, by the time it's finished, and some are in the ballpark figure of $100 million. So that is $100 million that our taxpayers paid over the last 25 years that instead of being in the city, have gone up to the county. And we've gotten some stuff back along the way, no doubt about it. And, but I just feel confident saying we sure didn't see $100 million of stuff. But we're going to get that revenue, and it's going to start coming to us. And it's going to be in a ballpark figure of about, you know, $5 to $6 million a year. And that's going to start up in a couple of years. So I'm very excited about that and what the city is going to be able to do with that. I think something missing from tonight, though, was the other reason why we're here, and you know, and that's the building of the new city hall. You know, 20 years ago or whatever, the city council made a very good decision at that point to create a general fund reserve. We built that fund up to about $35 billion or so, and that was to prepare for the rainy day. And guess what? It's raining. And we've now crossed over. Our expenditures are maybe, are outpacing our revenues, and here we are today in a tough spot. I think that when we think about fiscal prudence, that was mentioned before, I have to say that it wasn't prudent to spend those dollars when that's never what that fund was intended for, and it was intended for today's issues now that we're seeing. So we're at where we're at, and, and we're going to have to face the issues one way or another. And that's with either a tax increase or the process that most of us in life have to do when we find ourselves in a tough financial spot, and that's figuring out other ways to tighten our belt, figuring out ways to put things off in our business, figuring out that we're probably not going to be able to give wage increases and whatnot. And the city has done a lot of those things. I don't want to ignore that because I think we have made a good effort in doing those things, but I think we're just going to have to go tighter. I don't believe that if we put this on the ballot, that it will survive, that it will pass. Those are some pretty lofty numbers I heard earlier. But as was mentioned by one, one comments about the SDA, and them looking at it and realizing that this is not the time to put their effort at a sales tax increase or a tax increase in front of the voters. I just don't think it's going to happen. And in the process, what's going to happen is that we're going to get the black eye once again of the, the, the lie, if you will, of when we became a city. And that city that promised the people was no new taxes. If you wanted to be a city, we were going to do it. We were going to do it without any new taxes. And we found a way to put that fund together earlier with the general fund reserve. And I know that we can find a way to, you know, get us on, or keep us on the right path and get us through this time until our property taxes start coming back to us and we find a better path. So for tonight, I can't agree with putting this on the ballot and at this time, especially President.
Thank you, Brett. Go to Portia.
This is tough. We know that we were going to get here at one point or another, and no one expected the pandemic. No one expected, you know, to be shutting our homes and businesses to close. And we have to figure, we have to figure this out. And Citrus Heights has spent the last 20 years surviving. And we have an opportunity in front of us to kind of rewrite our destiny and our future, a future where we're not limited or dependent upon funding outside of our community. I know it's a tough ask. I understand that. But we've always relied on ourselves to get ourselves into a better position. And now it's time where we can be the epicenter of workforce development, of business growth and education. And we have to put ourselves in a position where we're, whether any economic storms occur, qualified pandemics or natural disasters. So I feel strongly in that we can take ourselves into a position where we are surviving and by a future that allows us to thrive. And I can see myself supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Portia. Jeannie. Jeannie, unmute. Thank you.
I have just great things to say to myself. First of all, I'd like to thank staff and our consultants for the fine work that they've done. Just want to correct some of the things I heard tonight in the comments that were made. This is not a measure that is being pushed through at the last minute recklessly. This is based on two years of data, of facts that have been received and accumulated from public comment and from well-thought-out surveys. Our public is telling us what they want. Our public is telling us that they would support the funding to do this. Our city is not a city that has been reckless and careless with our funds. As most of you know, I've been around since the beginning, not on the city council since the beginning, but around with the effort since the beginning. And I can attest that our leadership, both elected and hired, have done a enormous job in keeping costs in control. And we have a very flat organization, meaning we don't have many layers of management. We are very lean on a personnel basis. And as you heard from our chief of police, we have openings and vacancies that we cannot fill for essential services because we don't have the revenue to do it. And you also heard our city manager say that through conscientious actions and careful planning, our city staff has cut our expenses by $1 million even before the pandemic came. That is not reckless and careless financial management. That's very thoughtful and prudent financial management. One of the other arguments that are always made when there is a possibility of putting a measure on the ballot such as this- a measure on the ballot such as this is that it's not the right time. I would like you to tell me when the right time is. Right now is the time that we need these funds, and we're not gonna be able to continue to serve the city in the capacity that our citizens have told us that we want to serve, be served without the additional revenue. Sales tax, the sales tax increase spreads the, spreads the increase over a much larger population than our citizens in Citrus Heights. The, the increase is shared by all who, who purchase services and products within our city. And this, we lag behind other cities who have already taken these steps and are using the measures that their citizens have approved to enhance our cities. And so this, we are in a period, we are acting already in a period of austerity, and these increased revenues are essential. It is true, there are things happening around us that we cannot control. We cannot control the pandemic that has hit us, we're, we are controlling it, we are at our behavior, but we cannot control it on a grand scale. We can't control what may come down the pipe in a year or five years on a state or federal level, short of electing the right people who could have in office, who are going to be prudent and careful with not only our funds but our future. But we can control what goes on within Citrus Heights. And this is our opportunity to raise $12 million a year to be used within our own city and not used elsewhere in the community. As, as it was mentioned earlier tonight, we knew there would come a time when our expenditures outpaced our revenue. And back in the early 2000s and the late 1900s, we thought that would be about five to 10 years out, where we have stretched that to 23 years. And so I think that's only done, been done through very prudent financial oversight. Also, in the early days, we were able to maintain a large reserve, in large part because we made good earnings on our investments, to the $2 million a year or more that would fund our, our services that are growing city. When that went flat back in the '07 through '09 era and on, and forward, our money sitting in our, in our reserve account wasn't working for us. And we made the decision to pay cash for those things that we needed, which included a new city hall, because our old city hall was falling down around us. It included a new police department expansion to house our newly-formed police department. It included a community center that's brought revenue to our city and a sense of community for our people and our, our own organizations to hold events. So I don't agree that this was just a rainy day fund, this was a fund to be used for investment and growth. And had we not used our, our funds to pay cash for the needs that we have on an infrastructure basis for our new city hall and our other new buildings, we would be way, way in debt to the tune of tens and maybe hundreds of millions of dollars like other cities have done. We did not do that. We waited, we took our time, when we had the money, we spent it on a cash basis. So today, I am here to say that I believe that this is a good measure, I think the homework has been done. I approve putting it on the ballot and letting our voters decide. I think our voters have told us that they want us to move our city forward, and they are willing to support this tax increase, which isn't borne on only the shoulders of our residents, but which is spread out through anybody who shops in Citrus Heights. And so I will support putting this on the ballot for a vote.
Thank you, Jeanie. Steve.
Well, thank you, Jeff. I did want to address some of the past financial decisions and clarify something because, yeah, we did sock money away when we had the extra money, and something that Henry Tingle did was also socked money away in the capital reserve, not just the general fund reserve. We used the capital reserve for the buildings of the community center, police station, and the new city hall. And one thing I remember from the decision, and it wasn't an easy decision to go with the new city hall, but just to renovate, just to fix the elevators and problems with the AC, electrical, plumbing, all the problems, the, the place was dry, dry rot, all the wood was falling apart around us. It would've cost $13.3 million to renovate the old city hall. The net impact of the general fund at the new city hall was $8.9 million, so we actually saved $4 million. Another thing we did was create our police department 14 years ago, which immediately saved us $6 million a year. That's over $90 million over the past 14 years at least, because we also know that the sheriff's contract would've kept increasing. I believe passage of this measure will truly improve the diversity, inclusion, and opportunity in employment, housing, and education throughout our city. It will restore our pay issue bill policy, paying cash rather than incurring debt and having to pay interest payment and bond managers and all that extra cost that we didn't spend on the new buildings. It'll eliminate our debt and allow us to rebuild our reserves, both capital and operating. It will provide an economic stimulus at a time where businesses and residents need it most, and it'll help fund economic development opportunities that bring more jobs to Citrus Heights, which is something else the new city hall did. It provided, it was a $30 million investment by, it was a $30 private investment, and the new facility there has created 220 professional jobs. It'll also make possible major projects. And something that hasn't come up that I think will become a community priority is an animal shelter, that's something we've talked about for years. And I see this as the only way we can start saving our money, put aside $20 to $25 million for something we truly need and is not cost-effective now under the current model. It'll provide funding for first-time home buyers locally and create new community partnerships. So I believe this measure passed will be a catalyst and a sound investment by our citizens to move our city to the next level. It will allow us not to just survive, but to thrive. Therefore, I'm supporting this measure, and I do look forward to debating the merits of this measure over the next four months. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. So one of the issues, when you go ask, is all the good points have been said, and I don't want to rehash a lot of them. I, I do want to start off, though, thank city staff for a very cohesive, compelling presentation, so for, thank you for that. I also wanted to thank all the people that, you know, called in live over Zoom. You know, personally, I don't even watch the news at home, because every time you start hearing politicians or others talk, they're so divisive, you know, they, I mean, it's perfectly honest, it, it's fine to disagree, it's how you do it that, in my opinion, makes you the type of person you are. And I have to say tonight, you know, not everybody agreed, but everybody was respectful, everybody was, you know, stated their opinion, and we moved on, so thank you for that. You know, you always kind of wonder when you're doing a Zoom, and you might not have full control of, of everything, how things are gonna go, but I, I just want to thank everybody who spoke for or against, that you all did a good job, and appreciate it. I didn't have to hit the little button that zapped ya, so thank you for that. I can remember the day, my first, back in 2003, my first staff presentation, and 10 minutes into the presentation, they were showing me the 10-year budget model and where we were going to cross over from black to red in the budget, and that was 2006. And I'm like, oh my God, what did I get into? Why am I looking to do a job where I'm gonna have to, you know, start figuring out that we're gonna be short money three years from now? Well, that was 2003, it didn't happen until now, and as Jeanie said, you know, that's 20-plus years later, well, 17, I guess, the banker should get the numbers right. 17 years later it happened versus three. To me, that was a pretty good save from all of the leadership, from the city council to the staff, to everything that they needed to do to, you know, make it so that we didn't go into the red. There's no doubt that with the pandemic out there, it, it's a tough time to ask folks, but ironically, even some of the people that I heard tonight that disagreed, never said that it wasn't, that the city doesn't need the money, it was maybe it's not the right time. I, I don't know what is the right time. I'm prepared to move it forward based on the research that's been done, based on the need that I know after being here for 17 years, and I, I think it's right for the people to decide. You know, I think we've laid out a compelling case. Sure, you know, you can always cut, but at the end of the day, when you cut, that, that's gonna affect services. And I have to say, we have the number one police department in Northern California, it might even be, you know, arguably all of California, and I don't want to see, you know, that money cut. I don't want to see those positions left open. We need our officers on the street. When you, you know, the one thing that I think everybody realizes is if you pick up the phone and call 911 and your life is threatened, you're gonna have somebody show up. If you come home from a vacation and your house was broken into, but there's nobody there, yeah, they're not gonna turn around and make that a priority call, they'll be there, but it might take them an hour, hour and a half, depending upon what's going on. But I know if I dial 911 today, somebody's gonna show up very quickly, and I don't want that to change. To me, the number one priority for local elected officials and in local government is public safety and infrastructure. Well, we already know our roads aren't in great shape, and we need additional money to fix them, and they continue to rise, and again, we've got a great police department, but we need to give them not only the tools, but the funding that they need to keep doing the great job that they're doing. So I, too, am willing to support the measure and put it on the ballot and let the citizens have their say. So with that, Amy, could I get the, you to, I don't know if it was in their presentation, but the, the screen that shows what the resolutions are? Do you not have that? If not, I think it's all in your agendas.
So I will move the resolution to submit a transaction sale and use tax measure to the voters at the November 3rd, 2020 general municipal election and to case related actions.
Second.
Bruin's motion, Middleton's second. Amy, roll call.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Nill.
Councilmember Middleton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mayor Slowey.
Aye.
Okay, then I will also introduce in the way the first reading of the ordinance of the city council of the people of the city of Citrus Heights, California, adding Article 6 transactions and use tax to Chapter 86 of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code.
Second.
Motion again by Bruin, second by Middleton. Roll call, Amy.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Nill.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye. So in the presentation, when our city attorney said we needed four fifths passage, four to one equals four fifths, if I do my math right. So both of those items will move forward, and then they will come back, is it the 13th of August? Is that when they come back?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So both motions pass. Next item, Amy.
Next item is department reports, and I don't believe we have any. The next item is city manager items.
No, thank you.
And the next item is items requested by councilmembers or future agenda items.
Any items by council?
I, I have one.
Okay.
Proposed.
Sure.
In light of this moving forward with our tax measure, I would like for us to explore developing a policy that'll allocate available general fund reserves into a local bank, that'll provide a third-party reporting for the purpose of reinvesting into our local business economy. I really want to see if we can show our residents that we're really committed to keeping our money in-house, and we're really committed to helping them and grow our community.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a, so we'll put it on a future agenda. Thank you for that. Any additional requests? Again, thanks to the council. I think you know, last, beginning of last month, I had indicated that I was hoping we'd all make it back into the chambers to start holding council meetings, obviously the increase in, and the reclosures in some, some cases, so at this point, we're gonna kind of play that by ear, but we'll just keep everybody appraised, so. Any final words from any council members? All right. At that point, I will call this meeting adjourned and talk to y'all later, so thank you, folks.
Thank you.